Jake, I was right.
Yeah. Okay. Before we start, Chris, just housekeeping. I thought there's going to be amended.
Yep, Mr. Mayor, City Council. What I put on your dais is an amended RCA for the tobacco licenses. I'd ask that the agenda be amended for this new RCA. We will upload it immediately.
Okay. So, welcome, everybody. This is the Oakdale City Council regular meeting. Tonight, we're starting at 6 o'clock, which is the Truth and Taxation Meeting for 2023. Sarah, would you do roll call, please?
Councilmember Ingridson.
Here.
Councilmember Olson.
Here.
Councilmember Swedberg.
Here.
Councilmembers Abel.
Here.
Mayor Ranky.
Here.
Please join me now in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I mentioned that this is a special meeting for the city, and this is our Truth and Taxation Meeting. So that's why we're starting at 6 o'clock. Immediately following this, we'll start our normal city council meeting. So with that said, Chris or Jim, do we have to do the agenda amended action first?
Yep, I think you should go through that.
Okay, let's go do that. So we have an amendment to the agenda, and this is dealing with consensus motion D. Could I have a motion, please, then, to include this in our packet and have a motion to amend the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Is a motion, a second? Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then that motion carries as presented. So now I'm going to open up the Truth and Taxation Meeting. And call in Finance Director Zimmerman to make the presentation for us. The process that we'll use is after the presentation, I'll open the meeting to public comment. Anybody that here wants to share something, please approach the podium and state your name and address, and then share with us your thoughts. And then we're going to close that portion of it, bring it back up front, and take some actions. Good evening, Jason.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Per Minnesota State Statute 275, cities with a population over 500 are required to hold a meeting between November 25th and December 28th to discuss the 2023 property tax levy and budget. This Truth and Taxation Meeting was enacted by the Legislature in 1988 to enhance public participation in the Minnesota property tax system. As Mayor Ranky noted, following the presentation this evening, the city council will open up the meeting for public input before considering the adoption of the final 2023 property tax levy and budget. It's important to note that the final levy may not exceed the proposed property tax levy that was approved at the September 13th city council meeting and subsequently used by Washington County to generate the proposed property tax statements that were mailed in the second half of November of this year. With that, I'll jump into the presentation. So the following budgetary principles were essentially enacted to begin the process and provide staff a game plan of moving forward with the budgeting process. So some of the key principles are evaluating both short and long-term impacts of all budgetary decisions, stabilizing revenues and expenditures, funding operations at an appropriate level and reasonable cost, and considering additional investments that may help achieve city goals and provide return to the community. And then additionally, some of the prioritized objectives include focusing on essential city services, maintaining city-operated public safety departments, investments in modern technology to improve services and increase efficiency, continuing the annual street reconstruction and maintenance projects, enhancing city parks, trails, open spaces, and facilities, fostering an efficient and transparent government, and also promoting citizen engagement. So some key definitions are on the screen here that are incorporated in the presentation. A couple of note, so the market value is the assessed value that's determined by the Washington County Assessors Office. And market value is defined as the usual selling price at time of assessment. Also, the term class rate is used throughout the presentation, and it's a percent of market value set by state law based on use of property type and is established in the property's tax capacity to which the property is taxed. So this is a real consolidated property tax timeline. Obviously, there's many more action items throughout the calendar year. But essentially, in January of the current year, values are established for the following year's basis for property taxes. So essentially, there's a year lag between values being established and when they're used for taxation. Notices are mailed in February. The first set of property tax statements are issued in March. May, the first half property taxes are due. In September, jurisdictions adopt proposed levies. Then in November, the second half property taxes are due. And then in December, final levies and property tax levies are set for all taxing authorities. There's a number of reasons why property taxes change. A number of those are on the screen here. So things like changes in market value, levies at various jurisdictions, and voter-approved referendums are some of those items. And again, it's important to note that a common misperception is that decisions made by city council about taxes needed to deliver essential city services is the only reason for property taxes to change. Again, there's a number of items that are outside of the local jurisdiction's authority that can impact or influence the taxes to a specific parcel. So some of the highlights from the 2023 property tax levy and assessment. So citywide assessed values are increasing by 16.5% from 2022. Again, the apartment property class type with the greatest increase of over 28%. The preliminary tax rate has a reduction of 2.9% from 2022, which again indicates values are growing faster than the local city tax levy. The proposed 2023 levy is a 12% increase from 2022 and includes all city operations, including the general fund, debt service, and capital projects. So the estimated median residential property in the city is up to $315,000 or up 19.2%. Again, there's that lag from when property values are established when they become taxable. And then the median residential property value has doubled since 2012 and the third largest increase of any city in Washington County, among the most populous cities in the county during that time span. So some of the preliminary budget highlights, again, those go back to the objectives and the goals that the council has set, which include the commitment to city-operated policing, so that includes the deployment of body-worn cameras, the addition of a full-time patrol officer, and four new squad vehicles to be deployed to the patrol division. Also, the transition to a full-career model fire department. So that includes the final three hires for the fire EMT paramedic positions in 2023. And it's important to note that the city of Oakdale joins only 1.9% of the other 725 licensed fire departments in the state of Minnesota to move to this full-career model. Additional investments in city facilities, equipment, trails, open spaces, and parks. Really, the city has the most comprehensive capital improvement plan in history, includes internal funding for all vehicles and equipments, which eliminates equipment certificate debt. Also, as noted here, playground equipment at one park and repaving the Oakdale Nature Preserve Trail, enhancements to city surveillance equipment, and the creation of a full-time facility manager. Additional to note, it's a reduction in the debt levy for the third consecutive year into the lowest level since 2017, and also absorbing over $260,000 reduction in local government aid from the state of Minnesota. So some notes on valuation changes and the tax impacts. So again, as noted earlier, the assessing responsibility essentially falls with Washington County. So they're required to establish the values for all properties. And again, it's defined as the most likely selling price as of January 2nd for that assessment year. Also note that the assessing process takes into account market trends from the proceeding October 1st through September 30th to help establish those values for January 2nd of that year. So some notes about the property tax classification types. So to the far right of the screen shows the percent increase in values overall, with residential values increasing 18.3%. Again, apartments with the largest increase of over 28%, and commercial industrial with only a 3.15% increase. And again, important to note throughout the presentation that residential properties are defined as single-family duplexes, triplexes, condos, or townhomes. So looking at the composition of the city of Oakdale compared to the rest of Washington County, you can see that the composition of the tax base is relatively similar. Oakdale has slightly larger portions of apartment and commercial industrial compared to the rest of the county, but fairly similar composition. Similarly, looking at the 2022 values versus 2023, relatively unchanged with the exception that the residential and the apartment segments, as noted a few slides back, have increased at a faster rate than commercial industrial. So you can see that the commercial industrial slice has essentially decreased by 2% with the apartments and residential components increasing at a faster rate. Then looking at the median residential property value over time, looking at from 2007 to the low point of 2013, and then looking year-over-year from 2022 to the 2023 preliminary number of $315,000. So important to note that essentially, all of the 9,600 residential properties in the city are increasing at a rate at over 10% year-over-year. Very few are unchanged, and then only three properties in total experience the decrease And evaluating how that measures up to the rest of Washington County, very similar experience. Washington County has a slightly higher proportion of properties with an over 15% increase than Oakdale, but again, very similar with almost no properties experience a growth of less than 10%. Then also, looking at the market value drivers. So when we look at Washington County to the left, we can see that the appreciation in residential property values are driven by over 10% by new construction. Important to note, in Oakdale, it's only slightly over 1%. Again, over time, the expectation is that as more and more development is done residentially, we'll see more significant increases to be similar with the rest of Washington County, but helps display that a lot of the property value growth is from appreciation of existing property, not from the influx of new construction. Then looking again at the major cities or the larger populated cities in Washington County, again, all experience really significant growth to the median residential property, again, with Oakdale at 19.2%. And then looking at the trends over time, we can see since 2012, again, over 100% increase or double of value. Also important to note, some of the communities listed here have had significant number of additional residential parcels created and new construction to help support the increase in median market value trends. I'll move on to the next slide, which again shows that a significant number of parcel splits, a lot of those result in Willowbrook. Again, parcel splits, but without construction or new value, which actually drags down the median value slightly because of the parcels being empty. But again, helping display that, again, there's been a significant number of new residential parcels that are undeveloped, but Oakdale continues to really hold value as a result of appreciation and not the influx of creation of new residential properties. Then what does this mean to the median residential property? Looking at the screen here, for 2022 taxes payable, the median value residential property in Oakdale was paying $991 of city taxes. And again, looking at those most populous communities in Washington County and how Oakdale stacks up, it's a very favorable position to be in, with St. Paul Park and Cottage Grove slightly less, and then a number of the other communities paying a higher rate for the median property value. Then for 2022, just kind of setting the baseline, this is a sample parcel with a value of $263,000, located in District 622 in the Valley Branch Watershed District. Again, the composition of the tax dollar is, the highest portion is with the school district, 32% with the city, 23% with the county, and then the remainder with the other taxing jurisdictions in the watershed. So now looking forward to 2023 budget and property tax levy. So the property tax levy components really can be summarized into three separate and unique buckets. So there's the operating, the debt, and the capital. So really, I think what this slide helps show is the commitment to capital improvements throughout the city. So when we look from a 2022 to 2023 change, we see a significant reduction in the debt levy and increase in funding for capital projects. Over 10-year change, again, the operating's at about a 5.4% annual increase, debt at 4%, and again, capital at over 35%. Again, it's showing a reduction of debt, proactive planning, and increasing in capital funding. And also to note, as we mentioned earlier, in the last two years, the commitment to pre-funding all, replacement of all vehicles and heavy equipment in lieu of equipment certificate debt. Then looking at the general fund revenues, a significant increase of 24% projected for 2023. You'll notice in the charges for services increasing at about $1.2 million, and really, that's a result of, you know, an accounting reclassification of our ambulance or emergency medical service operations being incorporated back into the general fund. And then looking at general fund expenditures, again, to note, police, fire EMS, and building inspections, which is technically part of public safety, really the largest portion of the expenditure increase at over 50% of the overall budget in the general fund. Then coming back to touch on the annual debt levy. So looking at the last 10 years, they're, you know, pretty steady for the first few, and then increasing in 2018, 2019, really kind of cresting there in 2020, and then again with the proactive approach of equipment replacement, pre-funding those activities, and increasing the capital levy. This is really, again, noted, you know, a third-year consecutive decrease in lowest level since 2017 of debt. So again, really impacting the levy is the changes being made to pre-fund a lot of these activities. And then back onto the equipment certificate debt, which was used for vehicles, equipment, technology, again, all being pre-funded now, and as these debt levies will continue to expire over time, with the final portion of debt expected to be repaid in 2025. So then looking at the levy allocation, again, on the median property, anticipated to be just shy of $98 per month, again, with the largest portions being police, public works, fire, debt service, and capital projects, and then the lower amounts for things like administration, finance, risk management, IT. So very summarized tax calculation on the median residential property valued, anticipated to be at $315,000, running through the market value exclusion, taking the state class rate by the estimated property tax rate, comes to an estimated annual cost for the city So on this slide, we're trying to show the, essentially, what's going on with the tax rate. So assuming a parcel, the median value parcel from 2022 valued at $264,000, has no increase in assessed value. All things being equal, again, with the property tax rate reduction of 2.93%, this parcel would see about a $29 decrease in their property taxes for 2023. Then moving forward and looking at the parcel that's experienced the median value increase of 19.2%, again, they're going to see this increase of $183, but again, their portion of taxes is increasing at a slower rate than the increase in their market value. Now looking at the proposed property taxes for 2023. So this chart was created using the information that was provided by taxing jurisdictions in September, when they set their proposed property tax levy. So again, this isn't the final levies that are set by each community, as they're holding their meetings in the same time span that we are. But again, looking at the proposed value, and again, Oakdale continues to be third on this chart, up to $1,175 annually on the median property. And important to note, the action request of council this evening is to adopt a final levy that's unchanged from what was proposed back in September. And then looking at historical values in city property taxes, and I think that this is a good chart to help depict the market value increase and the changes in city taxes, it's been relatively constant over a number of years, in this year being, again, a kind of a normal cycle as it's been in the past, and not abnormal really in any way. So moving on to the Truth and Taxation Statement. Again, this statement is mailed every year, between the second and third weeks in November, to all property tax owners in Washington County. Again, this is the example for a parcel in the city of Oakdale. Again, notes things like the estimated market value and the taxable market value. It's the proposed taxes for all jurisdictions. And again, it doesn't approve any voter-approved referendums, which typically occur in school districts during the election cycle. So, you know, zooming in here, again, market value and taxable market value. This is a real sample parcel, closely mimics what occurred on the median value residential property. Again, the sample's about $1,800 different, but again, increasing at 19.4% compared to the 19.2% for the median value residential property. It's important to note as well, when property values are increasing significantly, what's going on with the homestead market value exclusion? So the exclusion is 40% of property value, up to $76,000, with a max reduction of $30,400, and is phased out at a 9% rate for values over $76,000. So in this sample parcel with a value increase of $51,500, the reduction of the homestead market value is $4,700, and actually impacts the property by $18.04, or 8.36% of the increase is a result of the market value phase out. And then looking at the Truth and Taxation Notice, again, these levies are proposed. They can be reduced, but cannot be increased. The notices also include the meeting times and dates, and on this parcel, the proposed taxes are up 12.6% from 2022. Then also, new for paid 2023 is a supplemental budget information insert. So this was an amendment to the State Statute 275 and requirements in the Truth and Taxation Process. So the county auditor is required to produce a one-page supplemental document, that I've got a sample of on the next slide, with specific property tax and budgetary information. So again, cities with populations over 500 are required to participate in this process. Those under 500 are exempt from reporting. And again, on the far right is the city summary budget information, which follows the office of the state auditors outline. So then also, there's a couple of property tax relief programs that are worth mentioning. So the state of Minnesota has two refund, essentially, their refund programs. There's a regular property tax refund and a special property tax refund. Again, a number of qualifying dollar amounts, you know, resident status, things like that that need to be met. Again, the list on the slide is not comprehensive. It's some select information, and then I'd refer anyone interested to go to the state of Minnesota's Property Tax Refund webpage for more information. And also, the state of Minnesota has a senior citizen property tax deferral program. Again, similar to the last slide, there's a number of criteria that need to be met in order to qualify for the program. Some of the major items I've listed on the page, but again, there's a more comprehensive list can be found with the state of Minnesota Property Tax Deferral Program. And so with that, that's the conclusion of the presentation that I have this evening. I'll turn the meeting back over to the council. They'll open up the meeting for public input and comments, and then at the conclusion of public comments, council has resolutions in front of them to consider for adopting the 2023 property tax levy and general fund, capital project fund, and debt service fund budgets. So with that, I'll turn it back over to the mayor.
Very good. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Before I open it up to the audience, councilors, anything that you'd want to ask? Jason? Okay. So at this point, excuse me, I'm going to open the Truth and Taxation Meeting to the public and ask people to, first, before they make any comments, if anybody wants to do that, I request that they have to fill out their name on a form from that Lori Polk Rebecca will provide you, and this is just a record-keeping practice. So if there's anybody here that would like to comment, please approach the podium, state your name and address, and then share with us the concerns on your mind. Is there anybody that would like to speak? Then finally, is there anybody that would like to comment tonight? Seeing none, I'm going to close the Truth and Taxation Meeting, and that'll move us right into opening of our regular city council meeting. So the regular city council meeting now for the Oakdale City Council is now open, and we have approved the agenda already. So the first order of business is acting on the budget that we had just discussed and listened to the presentation from Finance Director Zimmerman. So will somebody take that step and make a motion? We're going to take each one separately.
I'll make a motion to waive reading and adopt Resolution Number 2022-139, adopting the 2023 property tax levy and the 2023 general fund, special revenue fund, debt service fund, and enterprise fund budgets.
Yeah, fair enough. Makes more sense to do it together. So we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, the second. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then that motion is approved as presented. Thank you. Next up on the capital improvement plan, Finance Director Zimmerman, do you want to make any comments?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Nothing particular to note. Obviously, the presentation encompassed the funding requirements for the capital improvement plan. Only note that I'd make is to encourage the public to go out on the city of Oakdale's webpage and go ahead and look at the transparency portal that's been created with interactive budget content, all kinds of information regarding the budget and the capital plan.
Very good. And this, for the record, is the 2023 through 2027 Capital Improvement Plan. The most important part of this plan, in my opinion, is that first year coming up, 2023. That's where we've spent most of our time discussing, and then also trying to project out the needs through '27. Councilors, any questions or any comments about this action? Could I have a motion then, please?
I'll make a motion to waive reading and adopt Resolution 2022-136, adopting the I'll make a motion to waive reading and adopt resolution 2022-136, adopting the 2023 through 2027 capital improvement plan and authorizing the fiscal year 2023 projects.
So we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, the second. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then that motion passes as presented. Thank you. Let's see. Wherever Jason went. So is your presentation that we ran through tonight on the web Open Gov portal? Okay, so that's cool. So again, anybody that wants to review or check the numbers or just try to understand the information better can access it by going to our website, city website, and then there's a finance Open Gov portal. And then, what if people have questions? Are you open to have a residence call and possibly make an appointment or talk to them at least by phone? So if people have any questions about their sense about the budget or how it's put together or anything, don't hesitate to call. Jason is much better one than me. If you call me, I'm going to shoot you over to Jason. Next up on the agenda is our approval of minutes times, and we have two of them. First one is our workshop, Oakdale Normal Workshop on November 22, and then our normal city council meeting on November 22. So in front of us is the workshop minutes. Councilors, upon review, any corrections, questions, adjustments that you want to see made? Could I have a motion then, please?
So moved.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, the second. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. Sorry.
Really opposed?
No. I, no, I am in favor.
I?
Yes.
I was a little late on my eye.
A little brain delay?
Busy reading the next item on the agenda.
So that motion passes as presented. Thank you. The second set of docs is the minutes from our regular meeting, November 22. Councilors, upon review, any questions or adjustments that you want to see made? Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Those meeting minutes are approved as presented. Thank you. You know what? We got a little bit of time that if you guys are okay, we had asked Bill to come up and just do a little Summerfest presentation or just discussion with us to give us a quick update. Do you mind if we make just a small adjustment?
Right.
Bill?
You want to get me out of here? Sure.
You know? Councilor, Mayor, I'm really glad you're here, but if you would just bear with me for a moment, I got to take care of some business. Bill Burns. Each year, the city recognizes an individual who's gone above and beyond in their efforts to get involved in the community and help others by accepting submissions for its volunteer of the year award. During the month of October, nine nominations were received for this Oakdale resident. This Oakdale resident is Bill Burns. So the city of Oakdale is proud.
Is this where I talk?
To announce that Bill Burns is the 2022 volunteer of the year for his outstanding contributions to Oakdale. Now, we admit that there was another reason that we asked you to come up here.
Oh, paybacks.
And we're going to have you do that with us sometime.
Someday.
Yeah. But not tonight.
I'm a fisherman. I can feel the hook right there.
I got a little bit more here. So this is very cool. This is cool. So Bill lives in Oakdale. Bill owns Bill Burns Insurance in the city of Oakdale. So he's described in nominators as someone who bleeds Oakdale green. Burns enthusiastically chairs the Oakdale Economic Development Commission and serves the city through numerous volunteer efforts. Those that know him say he's the first to offer his time, is always supporting community events, and is a wealth of knowledge and a great resource for the city of Oakdale. He's a board member of the Oakdale Chamber of Commerce, the OACC. He's the board member for the Open Cupboard in the Carol Matthews Center for Children. Additionally, Bill spends time volunteering regularly at Tartan High School. The overwhelming consensus from his peers is that there is no better candidate to receive this award than Bill Burns. So on behalf of the city of Oakdale, congratulations on being our 2022 volunteer of the year for the city of Oakdale.
I think we got you pretty good, too.
Oh. Everybody calling. Nobody can show up. I got to show up. Okay. It's what you do when you're volunteer of the year. Thank you. So this, we are very, very pleased to be able to present to you. I'm going to let you open if you'd like. You know what? Because I'm going to drop. You've had a lot going on today. Yeah. Well, thank you. So it says, "The city of Oakdale proudly recognizes Bill Burns as the outstanding volunteer 2022." Wow. Thank you very much. Obviously, you don't get involved with everything to get awards, like what you've said many a times. It's just more having a passion for the city of Oakdale and making sure you can do everything you can to do what is there to do. So, yeah. Yeah. Oh, photo ops.
Are we getting a picture, all of us?
Yes, please. Yes.
Do I stay down here, then?
Yeah. You're good.
You stay up there.
I know. I'm going to have to pay for this, I think.
Oh, it works so well.
Nice.
Billy, you took it exactly how I thought you would. Ah, you took it exactly how I thought you would. Yeah, okay.
All right, count to three. One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three.
Congratulations. Yeah.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
We're very sneaky, huh? Yeah. Yeah, okay. We'll talk.
Do you want me to go home now?
You do. Chris, you're going to pay for that.
I'm good.
I could tell.
Summerfest, we'll figure out a way to make it work.
Yeah. Thanks for the update. Good report.
There we go.
Thanks for the update.
Thanks for everything, Bill.
Yeah, thanks.
Good night. We're going to keep on going on our agenda. Wherever we are at seven o'clock, we'll stop, do our public hearings. We have two public hearings tonight, and then we'll continue on. So, next item is the open forum. This is a period where anybody that's in the audience can approach the podium, state your name and address, and share with us anything that's on your mind. Typical way of doing this is to spend about three minutes, and if there's somebody that has spoken in front of you that is sharing the similar message, it's very okay to say that you concur with that prior person. So is there anybody in the audience who would like to comment about anything going on in the city? Seeing none, I'm going to move on to the next step, and there's a couple of presentations, additional presentations, so it's fun. This is a cool one because it acknowledges Councilmember Swedberg for her service. So Councilmember Swedberg had been on the Parks and Recreation Commission and then was elected to the council seat in 2018. So serving through now, it's with great pleasure. We give you this as a memento and as our appreciation for your service.
Thank you. Mayor, can we do a picture?
That'd be great.
That'd be great.
Just move the chair. Your choice.
Let's go down there. Yeah. Yeah. Three, one, two, three. One.
Mr. Rosello, we also get to recognize your service to the community. So if you don't mind to come on up, you know, I've got a few things to share. So Frank Rosello, for our recognition of your service for 24 years as the host of Oakdale Update Show, because yours is a visual medium, we also have a video to watch.
Ooh.
Really? And it's a good one.
Oh, my ears in St. Clair.
Oh, no.
Hello, and welcome to Oakdale Update. I'm your host, Frank Rosello.
I'm your host, Frank Rosello.
Frank Rosello.
Frank Rosello.
It was good. Yeah, it was good.
Remind. Yeah, we got to.
Technical.
Hello, and welcome to Oakdale Update. I'm your host, Frank Rosello. I'm your host, Frank Rosello. Frank Rosello. Frank Rosello. Frank Rosello. Frank Rosello. Frank Rosello. This is the city of Oakdale's news and information program about your community. This month, we are coming to you from the Minnesota State Capitol. This month, we're coming to you from the Oakdale City Hall. And here I am with Craig Waldron. He's such a busy guy, it's hard to catch up to him at any given time, but I did today. We are on location this month at the commemorative Air Force Museum in Salt Ste. Paul. Here we are in the office of Senator Chuck Wigger. He's agreed to join us on Oakdale Update. Chuck, thanks for joining us.
Well, welcome to the Capitol, Frank.
Thank you. Thank you. Do you want to give us a little bit of your background? What's your background? Could you give us just a little background about yourself? Let's start out with, have you give us a little bit of your background? Let's go, let's start out with your background. Why don't you give us a little bit of your background? Give me a little bit of your background. Don't go away, because there's more to come on Oakdale Update. Don't go anywhere. We'll be right back with more of Oakdale Update in just a minute. Don't go anywhere. We'll be right back with more of Oakdale Update in just a minute. That's all we have for this month. Join us again next month for another edition of Oakdale Update. For everyone at the city of Oakdale, thanks for watching. I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Frank, if I may, I'd like to read a little bit. When I come down, I've got an award that we'd like to present to you.
Okay.
So Frank Rosello, you began as the host of Oakdale Update in May of 1998. Little did he know that he would continue to host the show for 24 years. Frank has become a trusted source for sharing the news, the events, and stories of Oakdale and its residents. With a calm demeanor and a recognizable voice, Frank is known citywide, in fact, metrowide. Over the years, he has interviewed each elected official at the city, county, and state levels in addition to city staff and local residents with interesting stories to share. So on behalf of the city of Oakdale and our community, we'd like to recognize and thank Frank Rosello for 24 years of hosting the Oakdale Update Show. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
I don't have a slice. I did a great job. It was cute.
Oh, geez. Yeah, that's so nice.
So in recognition of 24 years, 1998 through 2022, as the host of the Oakdale Update Show, thank you for your dedication and service to the city of Oakdale and its residents. And that's Frank Rosello.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. He took all my thunder away. I was going to talk about some of the people I've interviewed. If I just can say a few things, may I? Huh? Okay. First of all, I have to thank Sue Berry. Sue Berry did all the researching. You know, her and I would get the guests tentatively lined up, but Sue did all the research, and then she'd give me the material, and then I would put the questions together. And I just want to say, when I first started, scared to death. I mean, in fact, the way the whole thing started was Craig Waldron came up and said, hey, how'd you like to be on television one time? I said, well, sure, I'd love to do that. Then I was driving home, and I'm thinking, what in the heck am I getting myself into? And anyway, but then, I mean, so that was a long time ago, but when I would get ready for the show, get the questions and all that, I mean, the first few times, I'd have a list like this, 15, 20 questions. Now, as I got better with it, I whittled it down to five questions and then follow-up questions, which, you know, just saved me so much time. But I just want to mention that the people that I've interviewed over there, hundreds of people, I mean, it's been hundreds of people, but we, I had authors, there's authors living in Oakdale here, they actually had published books, and let's see, who else? I've interviewed all the supervisors, superintendents of all the departments, every one of them, and then the workers, too. I mean, I got to all of them. All the event chair people, Summerfest and all the rest of them, mayors, I interviewed every mayor we've had and every councilperson we've had, administrators, of course, and Washington County, all the commissioners and all the tax man and the, all the people out of the Washington County. And I have to say, I somewhat got some celebrity status. I'd be going in the Cub or going to Menards, and people would come up, hey, I know you, you're that guy on Oakdale Update. Yeah, I am. And I also had one guy come up, and he was going to punch me. So, yeah, he was, I was coming out of the Holiday Station with a cup of coffee in one hand and the newspaper in the other, and he came up and said, you're that guy on Oakdale Update, aren't you? I said, yeah, yeah. You know what? And then he started, ooh, he started, he got mad about city stuff, you know? I said, well, I have nothing to do with that, you know? But anyway, anyway, so I just want to say, I enjoyed every minute of doing that show. I just, meeting all these people and talking to them, and just, I just enjoyed every minute of it. And I talked to Lori today, if you've got any projects that you want, you need some TV people, I'll be more than happy to do it. Okay? All right. Sure. Thank you.
That was fun. Yeah. Oh, SEC. They did a great job.
Count to three. One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, guys. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Frank.
That must have shown. That was the best one.
Some of the ties to it.
Yes.
So we're going to keep on going, and again, we'll stop at seven o'clock for the public hearings. So in our packet, we have consensus motions, and we have consensus motions A through T. Councilors, upon review, were there any that you would like to pull? Could I have a motion then, please?
I'd make a motion to approve consensus motions A through T as presented.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, the second. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then those motions, consensus motions are approved as presented. Thank you. Next up is an element that we call the advisory boards and commissions. So each of the councilors are So in our packet, we have consensus motions. And we have consensus motions A through T. Counselors, upon review, were there any that you would like to pull? Could I have a motion then, please?
I'd make a motion to approve consensus motions A through T as presented.
Is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is a motion the second? Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then those motions, consensus motions are approved as presented. Thank you. Next up is an element that we call the Advisory Boards and Commissions. So each of the counselors are liaison to our commissions. And I'm just gonna go through them. If there was a meeting, then the council member may want to share any update. So the first one was the Economic Development Commission. There was a meeting that was scheduled, it was canceled. The liaison for that commission is Susie Olson. The second commission was the Environmental Management Commission. The council liaison is Councilor Zabel, and there was no meeting for that group. The third one is the Planning Commission. The council liaison is Councilmember Swedberg. There was a meeting on the first.
Yeah.
Can you share?
Sure. The commission reviewed, discussed, and preliminary approved the two options regarding the forefront commercial retail property site plans that the Larson family submitted. The main difference was, one option was the grocery store, and option two was if that didn't come through, it might be a car wash. So now it needs to go to City Council for further discussion and approval. Okay?
Very good, thank you. The next commission is the Parks and Recreation Commission. Councilmember Inger Britson is the liaison. There was no meeting of that group. And likewise, the Tree Board, we're on the liaison, there was no meeting. So I think we have time to do the award of bid. So let's undertake that. Let's see, Jim, Mr. Romanek, good evening.
Evening.
You want to take us through this one, please?
I will. Mayor, thank you, council. Tonight, we're gonna discuss the award of bid for the Water Tower Two painting project. As you may recall, earlier this year, we bid the project. Two bids accepted, presented at that time. The bids came in, little bid then, was about $698,850 for a project that the engineer's estimate was estimated at $563,750. So at the August 8th council meeting, council rejected the bid and authorized staff to rebid the project at another time later in the year. So we bidded again in November. At this time, we had five bidders that came in place. Very competitive process this time. So the little bid we had this time is for $499,870, and that was for a spring completion project. We did have the option to do a spring or a fall project next year. But based on the bids, we're comfortable with asking council to authorize the award of bid for the spring completion with tanks coating at $499,870. Just so you're aware, our consultant that we're working with has checked their bids, or checked the references of the tanks coating company, because we haven't worked with them before, and our consultant hasn't either. But the references all came back good, three municipal references, and three references from private companies that they've worked for. And the consultant also followed up with them to ask them about their containment procedures, and they answered all their questions appropriately for that. So with that, I'll stand for any questions about this bid.
Very good, thank you, Jim. Counselors, anything for Mr. Romanek?
Which water tower is Water Tower Two again?
Everly Park. Yep, this is at Everly Park.
Well, it's not the spaceship one, it's just the...
Cylinder.
The cylinder.
Yep, one of the smaller ones that we have.
Okay.
The spaceship one.
So could I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to waive reading and adopt resolution number 2022-126, awarding the city project 2022-04, the Water Tower Two painting contract to tanks coating in the amount of $499,870 with a completion date of June 19th, 2023.
So we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is a motion the second? Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then the motion passes as presented. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Next part of our agenda is our staff reports. And, no, 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 yeah, staff reports. And we have one from the engineering, where we have a street improvement project. So Brian...
Brian's over here now.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Tonight, we are doing the presentation for the 2023 Street and Water Main Improvement Program. You did receive the reports last week.
Do you think we'll have time to do this in four minutes?
Your call. I've got, it's like 10 slides.
How about we go through? If you guys are okay, we'll stop if it's at seven o'clock.
Sure, absolutely.
Reconvene. Okay, please continue.
All right. The program that we're looking at for next year is about two miles of street improvements and some water main improvements. It is somewhat scattered around the community, but starting on the south end of the community, it includes the neighborhood of Ninth, Gershwin, and Glenbrook between Seventh and Tenth. Then the neighborhood off of 15th Street on Hydrum Avenue up to 17th Street. Two short stretches on either side of Helmo Avenue, including Helmo Avenue Bay and Upper 26th Street just south of Stillwater Boulevard. And then also the forefront improvement area of High Point and Hopkins Place, and also 36th Street to the north of High Point Forefront. And then also 56th Street, which is the access into Mills Fleet Farm. Again, it's about two miles of street improvements. The objective of the improvement program is to improve safety by improving the pavement conditions and lighting. It's also to control maintenance costs by reconstructing those pavements that have reached the end of their useful life. And we need to improve the pavement conditions because they're increasing at an increasing rate, and patching is no longer efficient. We also want to improve the reliability of our water system. The water mains on Ninth and Glenbrook and Gershwin were constructed in 1960, so they're 62 years old, going on 63. So, and they also have a history of breaks. I think there's been at least nine breaks on Ninth and Gershwin, and one recorded, and three by recollection on Glenbrook Avenue. The fourth objective is to eliminate service barriers. So these streets now are old and brittle, and we have to impose weight restrictions in the spring of the year. We do have an annual program. Again, we do two to three miles a year, and for next year, the streets are noted in red. And then you can see the following years, we have other neighborhoods that we're gonna be doing to keep up with our program and maintain our pavement conditions. The proposed improvements, I'll kind of go by neighborhood, if that's all right. Hydrum Court, Upper 16th, 17th. That is kind of our traditional pavement rehab program, where we grind up the street and replace the pavement. We also upgrade the street lighting with LED fixtures. Spot repairs on any utilities that need to be, are continuing to be investigated. Also evaluate the street names, street name signs, to make sure they have the suitable reflectivity. And then the final item, unique to this area, is there is a monument at the intersection of 15th and Hydrum. I've got some pictures of it. There's an opportunity to talk about removing that, and we can talk about the process to get the feedback from the neighborhood. In the Ninth and Gershwin and Glenbrook area, this project again involves a replacement of the water main. And due to that, we would also have to completely replace the street and curb and gutter. There's an opportunity to reduce the width of Glenbrook Avenue between Seventh and Tenth, it's 40 feet wide. Other streets in this neighborhood are 32 or 28 feet wide. So we have an opportunity to reduce the width. Certainly, Oakdale Elementary is being removed, and so the school's use of the street is being reduced. There's also an opportunity to improve the alignment of Glenbrook Avenue at Seventh Street. There's an offset between north and south of Seventh Street. And then with those improvements, there's a need for additional surface water treatment. The High Point neighborhood, again, pavement rehab, street lighting replacement in that area. And also on 36th Street, there's a segment of that street that has bituminous curb, so we'd want to replace that with concrete curb. And then also include a sidewalk along High Point Drive. That was something that was included with the PUD approvals with the High Point forefront development.
I think we're gonna take a pause.
Okay. We'll pick it up after.
So thank you very much.
Yes.
So the practice we just did here is being a little bit tighter than we have been in the past about starting our public hearings right about seven o'clock. So since it's seven bells, let's go ahead and start the first one. And this is a public hearing for the tobacco license. This is Smoke Kings LLC Tobacco Sales License. Who's gonna take this?
Oh, I guess I will, sure. So this request is for a new tobacco license for a new business. I believe the owners are here, and I'm not sure if they want to say anything. So what we're doing, the council, or what we're requesting of the council is that they approve the issuance of the license to them, and then give the owners an opportunity if they have any questions or address any concerns of councils. Yes.
Is the approval of the issuance contingent on the police department finishing their process?
Absolutely, and as long as there are no disqualifying factors. So it is subject to that condition.
Very good. So welcome. Part of our process is to invite applicants to share anything they'd like to share with us about their business. Would you like to come up and... Good evening. So if you would, please state your name and address, and then...
Hello, I'm Elmyra Rayner, 1162 Lawson Avenue.
Very good, good evening. You could just take a lead if you'd like. So it's a new business?
Yes, yes, it is. It's just a black business with the tobacco, because I don't even know what to say. I'm nervous, it's my first time. We own a barber shop and a beauty salon. And it was just something we wanted to try, because with the customer service and the area we live in, it's kind of hasty. So trying to do something new in a positive area versus where we stay.
Very good. Well, we're glad you're here.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for having us.
If it's okay, counselors, do you have any questions or any comments? Okay. Thank you very much for sharing. Counselors, so we have in front of us, can I have a motion, please? Oops, we should close the...
You have to open it and then close it.
So we're gonna open the public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to comment on this application? And again, this is an application for a tobacco sales license. It will take action tonight. If we approve it, it's gonna be contingent on the police department finishing the process. Is there anybody that'd like to comment? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing, bring it back up front. And now, counselors, any questions, any comments? Okay, could I have a motion then, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of a new tobacco sales license to Smoke Kings LLC located at 1237 Geneva Avenue North upon completion of the Oakdale Police Department background check with no disqualifying factors.
So we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is a motion the second? Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then the motion passes as presented. Thank you. Thank you very much. Good luck. Best wishes.
Have a great evening, thank you.
You too. The second public hearing is for the Oakdale Senior Apartments at Tartan Crossing Fifth Edition. This is a number of actions that we're gonna consider tonight. A PUD amendment, preliminary plat, and a site plan. This is with MWF Properties. And I think Mr. Getzlo, you wanna take us through this?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, council members. Again, MWF Properties requesting three different approvals for 168-unit multi-family senior living building. It's on a property of vacant land, about 10.3 acres just east of Hadley Avenue North, and 150 feet north in the intersection with Hallmark Avenue and 11th Street. So the three approvals that are sought today, one is a planned unit development amendment by ordinance, and that would allow for an additional 168 units to be added within the overall Tartan Crossing PUD. It also allows for a deviation from the standard setbacks to 11 feet using the PUD flexibility. Preliminary plat is also requesting approval. They would need to return back at a later date for final plat approval. And then site plan approval as well. And both those two resolutions are in the packet. This item was reviewed by the Planning Commission at their November 3rd meeting. It was not a public hearing, but Planning Commission did allow comments. No one from the public was there to speak on the item. And Planning Commission voted to take staff's recommendation to recommend approval of the ordinance and the two resolutions, which are in front of you here tonight. Two things of note, the applicant is here and may wish to speak with council tonight, and this is as well a public hearing.
Very good. Counselors, anything for Andy? Seeing none, I am gonna... Applicant, would you like to speak before I open up for the public hearing?
Sure, thank you, Mayor and council. Good evening. Matt Yetzer with MWF Properties, 7645 Lyndale Avenue South in Richfield. Andy covered most of it. We appreciate your consideration here today. We think it's an opportunity to hit a lot of goals of the city as far as providing affordable senior housing and revitalizing or redeveloping this site. So, you know, we appreciate your consideration and here to answer any questions that come up as the night goes.
Very good, thank you. Counselors, anything for Matt? Okay, thank you. Thank you. So I'm gonna open up for the public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to comment on this project? Is there anybody that'd like to comment on this project? If there is, by chance, just approach the podium, state your name and address, and share your thoughts. Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing, bring it back up front to the counselors, ask if there's any questions or comments. So then we have three actions. Let's take that first one, which is the amendment to the Tartan Crossing Planned Unit Development. Could I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to waive reading and adopt ordinance number 890, approving an amendment to the Tartan Crossing PUD.
Is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is a motion the second? Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes as presented. Thank you. Andy, is there anything that you want to share about any of these other ones as we go through, like the preliminary plat or the site plan? Or do you want us just to take them in order?
It's up to you, Mayor. I could read the conditions, or if you're comfortable, just adopting them either way.
You know, I think once you read the conditions into the record, it'd be easier.
Absolutely. So we'll start with, for the preliminary plat, resolution 2022-128, there are six conditions. First condition is approval of the amendment to the Tartan Crossing PUD, which was just done. The second one is execution of a development agreement between the city and the developer, which that will occur after these approvals. The third one is approval of public improvement construction plans by the city engineer. Number four is permits and approvals must be obtained from other regulatory agencies, and proof of approvals must be provided to the city before recording of the final plat. Developers set aside five park dedication requirements. In this case, it would be cash in the land and a payment of $427,896 prior to recording a final plat. And then lastly, upon recording the final plat, developers should convey a lot of Tartan Crossing to the city.
Very good. Does that prompt any questions? Okay, let's take the second one then. And the action is approving the preliminary plat. Could I have a motion, please?
I'll make the motion to waive reading and adopt resolution 2022-128, approving the preliminary plat for Tartan Crossing Fifth Edition with conditions included in the attached resolution.
So we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is a motion the second? Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes as presented. Thank you. We have one final one dealing with the site. Andy?
Yes, Mayor, next is resolution 2022-129, approving the site plan for Oakdale Senior Apartments with conditions. And there's four of those. The first one is the approval of the amendment to the Tartan Crossing PUD, which was passed earlier. The second one is obtaining all permits and approvals from the Ramsey, Washington Metro watershed district. The third one is that a license must be obtained from the Minnesota DNR for encroachments onto public waterways. And lastly, the developer obtain approval from the city's fire marshal for the proposed fire hydrant locations.
Very good, thank you. Counselors, anything for Andy on this last action? Could I have a motion then, please?
I'll make a motion to waive reading and adopt resolution 2022-129, approving the site plan for Oakdale Senior Apartments with conditions included in the attached resolution.
So we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is a motion the second? Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes as presented also. Thank you. And thank you. Lot of work to get... Lot of work to get to this point.
Yeah.
I appreciate your insight.
Yeah.
And we're looking forward to it. Thank you. Mr. Bachbier? I'd like to come back to you.
Thank you. Continuing where we left off with the proposed improvements, the first couple of slides I have here are pictures of the existing conditions, and I'll start with the median at 15th and Hydrum. You can see it's just north of 15th Street on Hydrum Avenue. It's a landscape median with the monument sign indicating Cardinal Meadows Edition. This is looking to the north, and this is looking to the south. Obviously, the purpose of the monument was to provide some aesthetic appeal to the neighborhood, and so we would, based on some comments that we've received, survey the neighbors to see if they support keeping the monument in or taking it out, and we can report back to the council before the council conducts the public improvement hearing in January, the results of that survey.
Brian, is that an issue on just plowing? What's the rationality thing for?
For removing it, it really provides no safety amenity, no safety improvement. It creates some issues with the abutting owner when it comes to parking, there provides no parking on the street, and then, yes, from a public works perspective, it does, you know, reduces our efficiency in that area with the snow removal operations.
And Brian, if you want, I can actually provide maybe a little more clarity on the parking issue if that would help.
Sure, absolutely.
I've had a couple residents reach out to me over the last couple of years. What happens is, you see where it narrows there? Cars will park in the back of the car will be right at the end where it narrows, and the cars come in, and then especially if there's a car coming the other way, or there's a car parked on the other side.
Yep.
Makes for a really
Dicey.
Dicey situation. Yeah, so.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Couple of things I'll comment on, by removing the median, we would have the opportunity to create a left and right turn lane as you approach the intersection. It would also provide additional boulevard space between the sidewalk and the curb and gutter. You can see in the picture here, it does get very narrow as you approach 15th Street, so there's very little room for snow storage in that area. So we would be able to kind of make that a uniform boulevard all the way down to 5th Street if the monument was removed. Another opportunity we have with this year's project is down at Glenbrook and 7th Street. So this is Glenbrook looking north, we're just south of the intersection, you can see the offset with the intersection. We have an opportunity to align this so that it would be kind of a straight intersection going to the north. The city actually owns all, pretty much very white boulevard on the east side of Glenbrook, north of the roadway there. So there is an opportunity to do that. We did reach out to that abutting neighbor to see if they would have concerns with that, and as of yet, we have not heard back from them. So we did leave a message, and explaining what we're looking at doing, and then letting them know to contact us so we can discuss it.
Can I ask a question there?
Yes.
So this one struck me as interesting, inexpensive, unless there's been safety hazards. Has there been accidents, or have we experienced, have our residents experienced safety issues?
I can't answer that, but I can certainly look it up for you. I can tell you that because we are replacing the water main to the north, we're gonna be removing all the curb and gutter and correcting the subgrade underneath, so realigning the road with the alignment, changing the alignment isn't gonna increase the cost of the project. It's already
You saw exactly where I was going.
A comprehensive project.
An alignment adjustment.
Yeah, you know, the one issue we were talking about is narrowing the roadway too, which will save some money. Currently, it's 40 feet wide, and we could go down to 32 feet wide, so that would save eight feet of paving and grading, soil correction, those kind of things. You know, the question is, do we go, do we narrow it on the east side or the west side? We're still evaluating that, what's the best way to do it? Couple of things are gonna play into it, the location of the sanitary manholes, we always like to keep them in the center of the road and avoid placing them in the wheel paths of the driving lanes. Every time when you move a road, you end up with those manholes right on the driving lane, they create noise and complaints when people drive over them. The other thing to consider is where the catch basins are in relation to the curb and gutter. We don't want to have to redo a lot of the storm sewer due to the roadway shift. So those are some of the things that we're evaluating on how to do that. We do recognize as well that if you narrow the roadway, you're gonna lengthen somebody's driveway, which they may or may not appreciate the additional snow removal obligation. So those are some things that we're gonna be evaluating and certainly making a recommendation to you when we come back with plans.
Thank you.
Next several pictures are just kind of reflecting the current pavement conditions. This is Glenbrook Avenue looking to the north, a little bit further north of that intersection. You can see the amount of patching that we've been doing in this neighborhood. You're familiar with this program and how these streets get on the list, and it's due to the amount of maintenance that we're having to do out there year after year with the patching. And this is on Gershwin Avenue looking to the north. This is over in the Hydrum Avenue area, off of 17th Street and Hydrum. You can see the distresses that we're seeing in the pavement, so it's difficult for the crews to go out there, and where do you start, where do you stop with the patching? And this is Helmo Avenue Bay looking to the north, starting to see a lot of distress in that pavement too. And this is up by Forefront, this is Hopkins Place, looking to the west, back towards High Point. And this is 56th Street up by Mills Fleet Farm. So again, you can see the amount of patching that we've had to do. Just looking at the particular neighborhoods, again, we identified that was the median off of 15th Street, and so you can see the two cul-de-sacs and the two stub streets to the west here in this area. And this is to the north off of Helmo Avenue Prairie Ridge Edition, so it's Helmo Avenue Bay and Upper 26th Street. Our overlay program, the reason we have these two neighborhoods also in the program is the collector streets adjacent to these neighborhoods, in this particular case, Helmo Avenue, and in the other neighborhood being Hydrum, we're looking at 15th Street as doing overlays next year. So an opportunity to combine, coordinate those projects, cost efficiencies are what's kind of driving the need to look at some of these adjacent neighborhoods. And this is the neighborhood to the south, so you can see where Oakdale Elementary currently is and is currently in the process of being demolished, and then you can see the two streets, and then 9th Street. And this is Forefront, so the streets up here on this project, as I mentioned, we, at this point, we're including the sidewalk along the west side of High Point, that was part of the PUD approval and is in the developer's agreement. Depending upon what gets developed first, either the street project will do the sidewalk with the street project, or the sidewalk will go in with the development of that parcel. At this point, it's looking like the street project will be going forward. There was $50,000 in the developer's agreement to cover the cost of that sidewalk, and that appears to be the estimated cost of the sidewalk through the feasibility report. So that's covering 100% of the sidewalk, that's added to the street assessment. The other thing that is yet to be determined in their site plan, they had a proposed left turn lane, and the question is, should we do that as part of this project? If so, that would have to be added to their assessments as well. We'll be meeting with the forefront owners later this week to kind of get a sense of if they want that turn lane included with this project. The other portion, 36th Street off of Ideal Avenue, it's between Forefront and then the Springs at Willowbrook is to the north, so we're gonna be redoing the street. There is a bituminous curb along the north side, so we're gonna be putting in concrete curb and gutter. And then also, the street width really varies along here until we get up to 38th Street, so we're gonna be providing a more uniform transition between these street segments based on how the property developed. When the street was originally constructed, it was gonna be all office park, and so it had very wide streets, and so now there's an opportunity to kind of make it fit more with the residential use to the north and then tie into the Willowbrook-Helmo to the north.
You know, Brian, if on that prior one, is this a master development, master developer obligation, or is it really the Springs that I'd be paying this assessment? Do you have any awareness of their knowledge of it? Because it's a pretty significant
It's a significant assessment, yes. We have sent notice to them, and I did call them personally and directly, and I said, if you have any questions, by all means, let me know. So as of yet, they have not called me back, so. But they do have a lot of frontage, I agree. And this is up by Mills Fleet Farm, so where the Hadley 36 interchange improvements left off, continuing from there to the east up to the Mills Fleet Farm, so there's two parcels, Mills Fleet Farm and the Marcus Theater, that would be affected by this project. There's just a couple of cross-sections showing the existing width and proposed width of Glenbrook and Gershwin, and then also 36th Street, like I mentioned before, up by Forefront. Process, we did have the virtual presentations ready for viewing by the affected neighborhoods on November 9th, notices were sent out. We also followed up with the, what is the problem, information letter with all the information in there after that virtual presentation. The report is being presented to the council tonight. If the council is comfortable with the proposed improvements, we will ask that you schedule the public improvement and assessment hearings for January 24th of 2023, and then the process from there will be back for council approval of the plans and specifications in March, and look to award the contract in April, and for the contractor to start in May and be completed by September. Generally, we try to be done before school, the fall school. Project financing, combination of special assessments, approximately $1.1 million, that's based on our standard assessment rates, plus the sidewalk, plus the concrete curb and gutter, as I mentioned. It covers about 22% of the project, so 78% of the project is being financed with other city funds, including utility reserves. That's primarily the water main replacement on 9th, Gershwin, and Glenbrook. $1.1 million, a surface water management fund of $100,000, that's gonna pay for that infiltration basin that we're gonna need to construct in Horseshoe Park for that project, CIP funds, and then general improvement bonds of 2.4, so the total project is a little over $5 million, about 5.1 million. The council action requested tonight is to accept the feasibility report and authorize the preparation of plans and specifications, and call for the public improvement and assessment hearing on January 24th. With that, I'd stand for any questions the council may have.
Great, thank you, Brian. Councilors, anything for Brian? Okay, can I have a motion then, please?
I'll make a motion to waive reading and adopt Resolution number 2022-125, accepting the feasibility report for City Project 2023-01, the 2023 Street Improvement Program, authorizing the preparation of plans and specifications, and calling for a public improvement and assessment hearing on January 24th, 2023.
So we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then the motion passes as presented. Thank you. Thank you, Brian.
You're welcome.
Next up, under the staff reports section, is Time with our City Attorney, Mr. Thompson.
Ms. Mayor, Ms. Council, nothing specific to report, but happy to answer questions.
Counselors, anything for Jim? Very good, thank you, Jim. Next up is Time with our City Administrator, Ms. Volkers. Good evening.
Mayor, Council, I just wanted to say, you know, Happy New Year to everybody and Happy Holidays, but also thank you from the staff to the council. This has been a really great council to work with, and you guys have done a great job of supporting us when we feel supported, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Counselors, anything for Chris? Very good. Council presentations. I think I'll start on my left, Mr. Zabel.
Nothing.
Ms. Swedberg.
Well, I want to say it has been a real pleasure serving the residents of Oakdale. I'm probably gonna get a little emotional these last four years on City Council. I learned so much, and I'm quite proud of the many things we have accomplished during this time, especially with all the growth currently happening. During this time, I also served as the council liaison for the Park and Rec, Tree Board, Economic Development Commission, and currently the Economic Planning Commission. I look forward to spending more time with family and friends as I decide my next serving endeavor. Thanks again.
Very good, and thank you. And it was cool to be able to present these, they're new mementos or new presentations. So you have one of the first, one of the first batch.
Thank you.
So thank you for your service.
Yep.
Ms. Olson.
So I would just like to say Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy New Year to everybody. And also, I just want to say what a pleasure it's been to work with you and Colleen, and I'm sad to see you both go, but I wish you both the very best.
Thank you. Mr. Ingerbrun.
What Suzie said. I sacked that.
Anything else?
Nope.
So on my side, we've got a couple announcements. So the Winter Wonderland, which is just a phenomenal deal, probably our, gosh, I want to say our eighth year, something like that? So it's the Winter Wonderland coming up on Saturday, December 17th. This is from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM up at Discovery Center. This is a totally free event, it's in partnership with the Oakdale Area Chamber of Commerce, and it provides a great variety of winter activities for the whole family. Some of the activities that'll be there will be horse-drawn hayrides, a petting zoo, a bonfire with schmores, schmores, smores.
Wow.
And then a visit with Santa, and we have a great Santa.
Yes.
Face painting, and much more. On my piece, I also want to say thank you. This has been an extraordinary time for me, 12 years as a city councilor, some time before that on the Economic Development Commission, and then six years as mayor. This business is about relationships. I've met just oodles of people. I've been involved in so many different organizations, you know, from the developers, which is my background, and I love that, and then it's to the business owners, it's to the schools, it's to the nonprofits, it's to the spiritual organizations, the churches, the Boy Scouts, you just keep on going. And what this role offers is just a tremendous amount of growth. It's been exceedingly grateful or proud of being able to move the ball along. We've moved the ball forward in so many different avenues, many, much with this council, much with councils before, some with this staff in a collection of talented people, much with other staff members that came before. So I think in my case, it's really, I've gotten much more from playing this role in allowing you to, or allowing me, or allowing you guys allowing me to make mistakes and dumb stuff, sometimes purposeful, sometimes mostly not. Anyways, with that said, with a grateful heart, thank you to the residents and to the staff members here at the city of Oakdale. Wrapping up here almost is the final thing that, you know, this is the holiday season, so on behalf of the city council, on behalf of the city council and city as a whole, I'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, and a Happy New Year, and a Happy Holidays. One of the last things we get to do tonight is our claims. So the next topic is this approval, and our summary of claims takes us from November 23rd, 2022, through December 13th, 2022. It's a large one this month, so it's $2,347,547.47. Counselors, as you had a chance to review, were there any that you had questions about or wanna discuss?
Could I have a motion then, please?
I'll make a motion to approve claims as presented.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the claims are approved as presented. Thank you. Could I have a motion to adjourn, please?
I moved.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then this meeting's adjourned. Thank you, and good night. Voila.